Literally drove in from Greenville. So.
Okay, alright, well, I think, uh, I think we're live on YouTube, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First item is to adopt the agenda, and if, um, there were three, Stephanie said three transfers that were added today. So.
Oh, yes.
When we vote to approve this, um, agenda, just everyone keep in mind, we do need a supermajority since we added that in a less than 24 hours, and the reason I think it should be added is because of these are transfer cases, and students need to know where they're going to school, and we can't put this off till October. So, so just knowing that with the updated, um, agenda with those three added ones, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, now that's everything. Alright, so then, we're gonna approve the minutes from last time, September 1st. Were there any changes that anyone needed to note?
Not that I saw, no.
They look good to me. Marty, do you have any?
Yeah, Dave, um, I didn't get to do much before I left, but I did do the minutes. Let me see, here they are. Real quick, 'cause I have no clothes. Yeah, no, they look good.
Yep. So, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as is. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And now, uh, public comment, just let me check with Stephanie one more time, and anyone write in with public comment?
We did not have any public comment for this meeting.
Alright. So the next, we're gonna, um, we have executive session items, we have some transfers, we'll decide, um, what will go into executive session to discuss, you know, any personal student information that shouldn't be in open session. If I make a motion for us to go into executive session, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, and we'll follow the instructions to move to executive session. Is that gonna be a little window that pops up?
Uh, yeah, Stephanie, if you just wanna give me the host again, um, I'll shoot everybody a notification.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, so everybody should've got one right now.
Is that?
Oh.
Stephen, we're back if you want to take down the executive session sign. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, last one here, you go through these transfer requests. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the number one, two, and three transfer requests. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, and then, C. I make a motion that we deny the transfer request of number four, five, and six. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the last one, number seven, I make a motion that we approve transfer request number seven with direct placement. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pamela, you were not, yes?
Yes, aye.
Okay. All right, so we're done with that. The next item on the agenda is our regular board meeting schedule, which we've been, we have been meeting the third Wednesday of the month at six o'clock. And one of our board members, Kristen, is not going to be able to make Wednesday, so we talked about moving our meeting to Monday. So Marty and I will not be on the board after November, so, but we, you know, this, the, we're required as a board to have our, our, our regular meeting schedule for the whole school year up. And it is up right now on our website, and it's with the third Wednesday, so we need to go ahead and change that. You know, once there's a new board and something comes up and y'all have to change again, y'all can do that too, but, um, so is Pamela and Trey, are y'all thinking, is that what y'all want to do, is keep it third Monday at six? Or are there other?
Yeah, Trey, are you okay with that? Like, can, so Kristen can't do Wednes, can't do Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. And I can make Monday work, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, is it easier for you to do earlier or six work for you? I mean, I could maybe do 5:30, but I think, I don't think I can do five.
Um, it's kind of tough, I mean, ideally, six would be better than 5:30 for me.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless we're, unless we're doing like, yeah, I guess, six or 6:30 would be better. Ideally, we'll stay relatively virtual, that'll help, because we have the kids out of school for the year, so, um, they wake up and we have them from, usually from about four, four, 4:30 through six is until they get into bath routine or dinner, so, um, if it's not going to be early, later's better.
Yeah, I'm worried if we make it any, we can't do later than six, because, you know, our case is sometimes, well, you know what happens.
Yeah, I completely understand, that's the conundrum, I guess, so that, I mean, six works for me.
Okay.
I'll, you know, occasionally I may have to, if we're phoning in still, which it sounds like we'll probably do indefinitely almost, uh, with COVID, then, you know, it's, it's possible that some I'll have to, you know, hop in and stay semi-silent for the first little bit, but I could at least chime in and, and help if I'm, if I'm stuck.
Okay, I know, I know Kristen wanted earlier, if we could do earlier, but I, I, I kind of feel like I can't really do much earlier than six.
The six sounds like the, the work between.
I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, if you decided to do 5:30, we could, we could make it happen. Um, like I said, I'd just, the earlier equals probably more time on, on semi-mute before they go to bed.
Okay.
Okay, so, with the third Monday, you run into problems December, January, and February, because it's non-school day. So, like, October and November, I think we're still good having a, a third Monday. But December would put us to December 21st, which I think right now is a weather day, which means it could be a school day, or it might not be. And it's pretty close to Christmas, so y'all, I don't know if y'all, if school is closed, I don't think the scared-ass staff.
So I see what you're saying, we've got the 21st, then we've got Mar, our Martin Luther King Day, and then we also have President's Day for the next two months on the third Mondays.
Right, so December, January, and February, you, you fall into a, a third Monday problem of either there isn't school, or there's likely that it won't be school. Um, well, of course, you see all the hurricanes out there, but, you know, if there, there, if there are not definite days that schools are open.
March, March is going to be the first day of daylight savings.
Can we do, can we do the second? What, what is, um, what is the committee of the whole?
They, so they, the big board meets second and fourth, Monday usually, you know, there's a couple times, like in July, maybe, maybe December, sometimes, they'll have one meeting. And the main reason to avoid that is that it's the staff problem, but I mean, if there was one day, I don't think it would be the end of the world.
I mean.
Can we do the first, first Monday?
I, I won't be able to do the first Monday, um, but I could do the fourth Monday.
We can't do it because of the committee.
If you want to move it to a different Monday for those weeks where there's a conflict, I think that's fine. The idea would be Jeff is going to roll off at the end of this cycle anyway, I'm staying on, but anyway, they're going to get a couple other staff members that get assigned. I'm the one who has to meet the board meetings, the other two don't have to necessarily, so it would, you just lose me.
Sorry, so, did, I, did you say that they meet the second Monday, or the fourth Monday, or both Mondays?
Both, second and the fourth.
Okay, um.
All right, let's leave it at the third, and then for those three weeks, we'll figure something out, those three months, we'll figure something out.
Well, you, you have.
Yeah, maybe they won't even need us.
You do have to pick it tonight, because I mean, we have to put this up on our.
We have to pick it tonight, okay.
Yeah, we have to publish this.
Got it, all right, let's see.
If we really want no one to attend, we could do Friday evenings, right? Right, Pamela? Is it really important that you transfer? You have to show up on Friday night at 7:00 PM if you actually want to transfer, I think we'll cut them down by like 90%.
Um, with, with drink in hand.
That sounds great, but no.
I, I can see Marty watching YouTube, joining in on our, our.
Just want to check in on y'all, make sure you're okay.
Um, Trey, you can't do first, first Mondays, you said, at all?
Correct, no. I have, I have a, I have conflicting board meetings on Mondays, men.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, okay, so.
Unless we did early in the day, which I know we're not going to be able to do, but I have five, I have a five o'clock board meeting on every first Monday.
Oh, well, that's, that's an idea, I could do earlier on a Monday.
My suggestion is someone, I won't be on the board, but, you know, our bylaws will normally say, you know, we meet the third, whatever, blah, blah, at this time, you switch the time around. And you can do it, but my advice for December, January, February.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday, you know, you're going to have two other board members, I mean, Kristen might not be able.
Yeah, I agree.
But it's got to be pretty standard, I mean, you don't want to have like, oh, we met at 12 this day, and, I mean, we can do that for special call meetings, but you're, I, you know, the same, it needs to be the same time for your regular board meetings, so people know when you, when you need.
You know what, Trey, it's true, because if we have special call meetings for transfer, for discipline cases, which, you know, we don't know what's going to happen this year, but if they do happen, we've got to figure out how to save anyway, so.
I would say, Pamela, whatever works best for you, because, well, I'd say.
Well, I, see, I'm flexible, I'm pretty flexible, it's really Kristen that becomes the issue. I, I think Sarah makes the most sense, let's do Mondays with the exception of those three weeks and do Tuesdays at six o'clock, can you do Tuesdays?
Uh, yeah, I should, I should be able to do Tuesdays.
Okay.
I mean, except for the December week, I'd rather see if we can schedule it the week before, like, the 21st is still, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, with the exception of that one, yeah, I can do Tuesdays. Tuesdays would work better, actually, because I'd really like to take vacation on the Mondays that are holidays.
Right.
The December one, then, would be Tuesday, December 15th.
Right.
And then your January would be.
So you're saying we'd meet, uh, Tuesday. For Jan, for December, yeah, we'd meet the week earlier on the 15th?
Yeah.
I like that, and then the 19th in January, um.
Right.
That's inauguration day is on the 20th. Interesting, that'll be fun.
January, okay, the 19th.
I might have moved to Canada by then.
I was gonna say, we, you know, that's why it's important that you select the time, Pamela, because who knows who's going to be living here, I'm going to bet more on you than anyone else.
Um, right, and then we'll, let's do the 16th of February, then, and then after that, we'll just go back to the regular Mondays.
Okay, so it all, it all works out, then, to be the third Monday, with exception of December, which will be Tuesday, December 15th, January will be Tuesday, the 19th, February.
And the 15th of March, are we going to recognize, uh, daylight time savings, or are we going to go with whatever the new bill is that is allegedly suggesting they're going to forego it this next year?
I hadn't even heard about that one.
It's just a 2020 issue.
That's my birthday, okay, well.
Oh.
All right.
And then February will be the quickie, then everything else, all right, so we have that, and we'll, we'll, y'all are official, and then you'll get new board members, and y'all may have to change it all again.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, that sounds good.
Right.
Exactly what I want.
All right, so next is, um, item B, don't get too excited about a letter, because there isn't a letter, because I, I feel like we need to get our ducks in a row and, and know what we want this letter to say. But basically, so the student transfer request, which we, we've talked about before, um, I mean, we know there needs to be better communication and more transparency, and it's got to be easier, we receive so many, you know, 300 plus a year, more than any other area, and, um, so it does need to be smoothed out, but we, what we said last time was we wanted to end this year, um, we don't do annual reports so much anymore, it's not coordinated anymore, but we, we're still responsible for, for that, the providing recommendations, so I, I'm thinking we need maybe a little more information, so that this letter is more of a report that says, like Marty, you'll remember, our annual report, he used to say, we heard, you know, 312 transfer requests, uh, requests, and, you know, we had other information too, I'm not saying we, we do a whole another annual report, but if we have, we ask people to, uh, information requests, and we get the information, you know, how many requested we have, we heard of in March, we're in the summer, we, a few others have trickled in, get that number, how many were appealed, and then how many were overturned and upheld? And, and we need to have that information there, and to report that, and then we need to, um.
I'd like.
Go ahead, what did I say?
I was gonna say, I want to, I want to add a line in there about the overturned ones, and relate that to the correlation of our projections for Lucy Beckham, and how that's going to create an issue. I think that's, like, we get, we finally have some reason to show, hey, when you overturn us, it does undermine X, and so, you know, hopefully, that will be, I mean, because we may have to, like, actually lobby Mount Pleasant to change, so that we could have a trailer on campus now that there are, what, going to be 50-plus students?
Right, and no, I mean, yes, I think, well, I was going to say, Trey, that we need, first of all, 10-day numbers, I mean, we won't get 45-day numbers until, like, the end of October, we probably want to get this out maybe before then, but, um, and it's a weird year, so we know that, but, uh, you know, Lucy Beckham is definitely the trigger point, but also I've got to say, you know, we've got a lot of issues in D1 coming to D2, and, and, you know, we, we just re-sown Carolina Park, and, you know, I mean, I counted, we had 36, um, transfers requests from, you know, St. James Santee, I mean, which is, uh, I mean, 46 transfer requests, that's like one-sixth of their school population this year alone, which is insane, and we, we, you know, I mean, valid.
Those are the ones that were required to approve, right, based on some?
No.
Was it, was there leg, what was the legislation that, uh?
No, 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 not, not those, not the 15-mile necessarily, I'm just saying, that it was 46 altogether, but yes, we do have to keep that in mind, but, um, you know, I mean, everyone's like, oh, I work in Mount Pleasant, that's my hardship, was like, you moved it, like, I don't, at some point, something's going to have to happen, and, which leads me to the next question, just on Awandaw School update, but I think, yeah, I mean, I think that it would be great to do it, like you said, Sarah, as a report, get all the information, and let's add in our 10-day numbers, and our, look at the projections. Projections are definitely going to be hard to do, though, all things considered, this year, a lot of people I know sent their kids to private school, from elementary school levels, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of movement.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm interested to see what the virtual situation kind of evolves to, because there's obviously the demand for it to continue, my curiosity is if it's going to continue working for people who are working, so to speak, so, you know, I don't know if we'll see an uptick in it, or if we'll see a huge mass exodus from it in, you know, Q2 next, or I guess it'll be, not, not Q2, but, in, uh, in the spring semester, but, I mean, I think that, I, I'm not for, like, giving them board reports like we used to, so to speak, that are just like, here's everything we do, because we know that they don't, not to say that we know that they don't care, but, like, I don't want us, I don't want anyone spending time doing things that they're not going to recognize, or, you know, reflect on, so like, I really want to make sure that whatever we're giving them, hopefully ties into an impact of, this is why we do it, or, does that make sense versus, we approved X, just approved like X number, or, we denied X number that got overturned, and that impacts X? Like, I feel like they've historically been like, that's irrelevant to us, you know, and I, I don't know, what are, what are your thoughts? I just feel like we're just.
Yeah, I mean, I agree.
Board reports that get like a check mark for completion.
Right, Trey, I mean, I think, like, for example, you know, we need, we want the CPE expansion, you know, timeline pushed up, I mean, we've got some very key points, this is what happened this year, like, this is the reasons, and I, I could not, I cannot tell you from the last two, uh, maybe two board meetings, committee of the whole meetings, where that stands, because other things are coming up now in our district that I had no idea about, so.
I mean, we're having some of like the fastest home sales in history of Mount Pleasant.
Yes.
As a result of people moving, we're going to have faster expansion, higher prices per square foot in North Mount Pleasant, all the way up to Awandaw, like, we're wa, I'm watching like a neighborhood called Riverside up there, just, people are throwing a million dollars at buying houses with four, you know, with three or four of their kids moving in from Chicago, um, and I, you know, that's just one example of someone I'm aware of, but I think that we need to make a point of the, we really need to draw attention to the legislation that it impacts the 15-miles component, because that can, every single student there almost could, could apply to, and get, be automatically granted acceptance in one of our other schools, right? Like, so, to me, I think that we, you know, we, we use some of our data of what we're getting, and some of the trends that we're seeing, so that we can actually back up why it needs to happen, like, I want to make less like good-to-know statements, and ideally more like data-informed requests, I think, with our annual, like, almost more like an annual request, I don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah, as long as, I mean, Carolyn's going to help us get that recognized.
Because that's exactly what we're trying to do, Trey, I think we're on the same wavelength, because last time I said, okay, we're going to write this letter, like, what happened at Beckham, what happened at Carolina Park, now look at, you know, all this problem, and then to announce that, we're saying, well, we need to back it up with those numbers, make sure we have all those numbers.
I mean.
And the same thing.
Right.
I think we should ask them to already preemptively start requesting zoning variances or alterations to allow for trailers at Beckham, and then we pin that based on their approval of transfers that out, you know, go outside of our previous projections. I mean, that, I feel like that's going to get attention versus, hey, you overruled us, and now we can say, again, so when we come back in two years in our rezoning, we can say, oh, look, they did this, we asked them to preemptively plan, they again chose not to, and are the direct re, consequence to why rezoning's occurring. Like, I don't know, that's, that's how I feel, like, I feel like it's always a he said, she said, it's my fault, their fault, and there's never any like.
Let's remember one thing also, we get one chance to make an impact, we do have elections coming up, um, you know, Sarah, I know that you want to start working on this, and, um, we'll certainly all be happy to help, but I also feel like we're going to have, um, potentially five new board members, so, um, we might have new eyeballs.
Five new? Is there something you and I don't know, Pamela?
What?
You said five new board members, all of us?
No, 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 on the big board.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you meant ours, I was like, yeah, we're all going to be gone, I don't, apparently.
We're kicking y'all off.
I was like, all right.
We might, we might have some more receptive, um, you know, faces.
Well, no, I think it's important, like you, you all are saying, is to get the in writing, our board, you know, experienced this, we rezoned, we, we had these, um, you know, policies in place, you know, about the transfers and stuff with it, we were completely consistent the whole year, and then all this happened with just overturning for reasons that we were told by CCC was fake, which is not a reason to overturn an appeal. So, and that's why, that's when I started writing this letter, and I'm getting all into that, I'm thinking, okay, that's not, you know, make, I think we need a different approach, which is to have all these numbers, you know, this is what the numbers say, what happened, and they'll, um, this is, you know, this is why that, that negatively impacted students, D2, etc. So, okay.
Did we, um, did, did we ever get the data on if we experienced a higher percentage enrollment in public school than previously anticipated due to the pandemic? Because part of the question was, are we going to have more students that suddenly drop out of private schools, for example, that are, you know, suddenly CCSD students? Do we have any, like, numbers for first-time enrollees, or enrollees relative to project, previous projections?
Yeah, I think it went the other way.
Well, like, I think we have 45,000 students instead of 50, but Carolyn might have a more twisted face. Well, I think we have forty-five thousand students instead of fifty, but Carolyn might have a more towards safe number for that.
I don't have the enrollers compared to previous enrolled data, and we're still working hard to find some kids. Right, but we're down a good three thousand kids from previous, from projected enrollment at least.
Are we able to determine if those are relative to specific districts, or like, specific schools versus, you know, I, I'm, I'm always an advocate for, like, I don't care how many there are total, but like, how many in each grade, or how many in, like, each specific school? Because, like, we may have experienced a five thousand loss across the county, but we had an increase in our most expensive neighborhoods because those private school students actually withdrew. Does that make sense versus?
Yeah, I, I think it went the other way.
I, I hope so. That'd be great.
Right. I, I, I think in, and I'm generalizing, but just from enough chatter, a lot of D two people who just needed to make a decision went private. I, I think you'll see a sizable amount of people have switched on this side. So, but we can get those ten-day numbers and look at those and compare them to last year's.
Yeah, so ten-day count. Well, after that, what else do we need to ask for? Gonna ask for the total number of transfer cases we received for this current, this current year, along with the appeals, overturn, upheld.
Right. I think, yeah, I have a lot of that too, but yes.
We have some of it, but I just wanted one.
Yes.
One little, one little chart, like, transfer field. Alright, so.
So I think it would be interesting if you, you know, because originally we talked about maybe doing a letter about transfers specific to using Beckham as kind of like one of the touchpoints. Maybe we can also do it with the Allendale side of things. So is it possible, Carolyn, do you have any updates on what's happening in Allendale?
No, not, not on the, the property in the, no. But I can ask Jeff and make sure we have it for the next meeting. My, my sense is I would have heard if anything had moved since we'd last talked about it, but I'll follow up with him and, and make sure we have a report. I guess the other question was, at one point, we talked about whether the superintendent should come to a constituent board meeting. Or, in your point, Pamela, at the last meeting, and the connection, and everyone's point, and connections between this group and the other group. But you just won't wait till after the election to try to do that next step of connecting, like, inviting some of the board to come here.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I, I, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, because this board will have two new board members, and it can be sort of a introduction type, the fresh start, you know.
Yeah.
If they do the chair to chair meeting.
Your service, Ms. Johnson, and certainly Ms. Belk's services, and a real commitment. If we had a retirement plan for district, two board members, Ms. Belk would earn it.
Is Marty still with us? Come on.
Marty?
Yeah, she's, maybe frozen.
Maybe she's frozen.
She is frozen.
Okay.
Nope, not, they're gone.
She's gone. Alright.
They'll try and pop back in.
We still have three, right? Because we, alright, so for the next time, maybe ask for an Allendale update if there's anything new on that, October. Alright, so Pamela, when you talk about the letter, a touch point would be, of course, the Beckham. And do we want to mention with the D, the D one also? Because I was, what, would you say forty-six?
Yes.
Not that we're just saying, you know, no one come to our school, but I mean, there's obviously a problem.
Right, there, right. That's.
They're just, to point out. And, yeah, and Carolina Park, I mean, I think we, just, I don't even know if we want, I mean, Mount Pleasant Academy, I don't, I don't see this board doing anything this year, rezoning it. But when we ask for the, the ten-day count, we want for all of our schools. Is that right?
Right, yes.
Because in that way, we can see that, and we can be like, okay, we might have some time, because this weird year with COVID, Mount Pleasant Academy might, you know. That would be a really difficult thing to do, to rezone during all this. Let's see, anything else we need to request? For information?
I think so.
Alright, so for next time, Allendale update, we'll work on this letter some more. This just popped into my head when people talking about meeting with, you know, after the election, the meetup. Remember, new board members need training within the first year they're elected, and Pamela and Kristen need, need it too. And there may be, there's some recorded version somewhere, you know, because I can always answer questions, Pamela, but it would, because I know there's not really gonna be.
Like, an online training that we could do even.
Something to tie to over, so I imagine in January or February, they would do a training, because, you know, there's, what, twenty-six? Or, you know, all the constituent boards are getting new members, and so there, there usually is a training, like, the next January or February. But if there is something you can watch in the meantime, that's always helpful.
And I guess, Carolyn, I don't know if you know that, like, do you know anything about the fact that, I guess, the, whatever? Is it not, like, the National Board of School of Constituent Boards? Like, how does that work? Who does the training?
I, I don't know who's done it historically. Do you know Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, it's the South Carolina School Board Association, the same people that train the big board. And so even though y'all have had training on, on DAP, like, on discipline, you know, that's not what the law says. On what you have to be trained in, like, you know, this is a board, and, you know, Robert's rules, and forum, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And I think they bring in, I think there was a lawyer there one time, and Marty, I want to keep that one, she's probably been to a few over the years.
Right, it would be really, Carolyn, we'd never done that, and, and so we're kind of going in a little, I mean, you know, we've relied on Sarah to do it all for us, but Kristin and I have no idea. And Trey, I don't know, you, you didn't do a board training either, right?
I was given a big binder and told to read it.
And you did.
Did you read it? Okay.
I did read through it. Roger quizzed me on it at the time.
Alright. And then one question for maybe the next time, only because I haven't seen it come up in the Committee of the Whole meetings, and I'm just kind of curious. But Carolyn, is there a way to get some updates on the partial magnet? What's the word? Where we're at with them, or where the, how, I mean, I don't know if they're being studied right now. I mean, everything, of course, is a little bit crazy, so I would, you know, that was a.
We're looking for the forty-five day numbers, so we can compare forty-five day numbers to the forty-five day numbers of the previous year. We gave a report in May, which just gave a sense of how it was affected, but it doesn't really show the end game until we look at the enrollment. I, I can send you, though, the update from May, just so you get a sense of where we are, because we included a lot of information in the board packet around partial magnets in terms of where students are coming from, who's in district, who's out of district, who's in constituent district, et cetera.
Okay, that would be good. Great, thank you.
Yeah, I did have some questions about kind of the future of constituent magnets and our interaction with them moving forward. Because I guess it sounded like they were gonna give us the recognition for a year for, like, Sullivan's, and then it would, I don't know if it was gonna expire, be up for re-debate, that, and so that's where, that one and Jenny Moore, like, I was kind of confused on what the, was gonna happen, or if it was kind of a kick it, a can down the, you know, kick the can for a year and then let it expire, or be reassigned. So I just want, I need some clarity on that and what.
Right.
Because I felt like we got, like, what we felt like was a win, but there was really kind of a backdoor of, like, it's still going away. We just extended it a year almost. Does that, does anybody else feel like that was?
One hundred percent.
Well, there was a, so our, our partial magnets are now constituent magnets.
Right.
In my head, that's alright, we have one, two, three, four. So, but then, which, which helped us as a constituent district, because we didn't have to rezone the entire school district and zone Mount Pleasant having people to Sullivan's Island, you know, we avoided that huge, you know, problem. But yes, Trey, at the same time, there was a motion, I believe, that was voted on and approved, that at a later date, the school board would look at, I'm trying to think the exact terminology, but basically funding that magnet, the teacher point position magnet at a later date. So that, so it was kind of vague, we don't, and I don't know if Carolyn knows, but it, it did not go completely away. They're going to review those magnet schools to see if, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to put that in our letter of things we don't support still, is that we still support holding them as minimum constituent magnets for those. And, I mean, I'd like to stir the pot and make that an issue as elections are approaching, personally. Because I think that's gonna be one of those things they try to slide in again.
Well, why don't we wait and get the packet that Carolyn is mentioning and kind of see what, what, what that included as far as language? And that might give us a little clarity.
Okay, because I definitely want to make sure we submit that we support maintaining the, those, you know, those constituent magnet, I guess, designations. And I want them to have, personally, I want them to have to review it or read it at their board meetings so that it becomes public knowledge versus, you know, hopefully something that tries to get swept under the rug and ignored. I know that's, that's assuming the worst, but at this point, I have no faith that it'll, that we'll be ignored otherwise, or we won't be ignored if we just make it a kind, more simple request. I don't know what the, I don't know, does, does that make sense what I'm trying to say? Like, I want to make sure that both they have to incorporate it or think about it, and hopefully that someone in the public eye actually acknowledges it and reminds them, and it becomes something top of mind again, so it doesn't get, again, it was pretty much this last time, tried to, like, slide it under the rug and get it approved without anybody knowing. And then all of a sudden, everyone lost their minds, and then they delayed it and moved it to a time that was inconvenient for everyone, like, after they came out on that specific day. So, you know, to me, I'm expecting kind of the same approach.
Well, let's see what it says. Let's see what the package says.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, that'll help, and I'll go back and get that exact, exact language of that motion that they made. And you're right, Trey, because this constituent magnet designation directly affects how our schools are zoned and where our people, you know, it's direct, it's very much of interest of this board, because especially with Sullivan's Island, with that many students that go from B two. As a, you know, if it wasn't suddenly a constituent magnet, we would have this, you know, all hundreds of student hole with that school, we have to rezone, and it would.
And with Sullivan's, my concern is that technically speaking, when, in their other provision for review, schools with less than five hundred students, if it becomes to a point that it's under five hundred students, they could, in essence, rescind their decision to have a Sullivan's Island. I mean, I know it's super backdoor, but, I mean, technically speaking, that is, you know, when I read that five hundred student cap, and we have a school that, you know, has pretty much a maximum at five hundred, if we don't fill those seats, I mean, it goes on the chopping block as a school, not only as a, as a potential constituent magnet school. So that one, to me, is a pretty important place to, to keep an eye on. I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm being overly cautious or, you know, tinfoil hat on that one.
No, I, I agree with you that it, you know, we said we aren't doing an entire annual report, but we need to get that in, because we did work on that, we did help change that. It was a mission critical action that our, our area was not involved with in any way at all. There were no community meetings over here. So it, that, that's the part you were talking about, how it just suddenly, there it was, and it was like, D two, what? You know, we didn't have any, we weren't included in that until that came out about the partial magnet. So, yeah, we'll get it in there somehow.
I sent the May report, and then we're supposed to report again after the next, the forty-five day count report, which is prob, which is right around the last week of October, I think.
Sounds good. Any, anything, I guess we're kind of into board reports. Has anyone done anything with the schools? I mean, we rely on you, Pamela, because you have children in our schools. I don't leave my house pretty much, so anything going on in the schools, from board members and the events coming up, is everything? I guess, you know, it's, it's mostly, I don't know, I guess there's just not many, it's not like it used to be where you'd have these performing arts events and stuff to go to.
Yeah, I don't really, I mean, it's day one for us back in school, so I don't, I don't have anything to say yet.
For district reports, Carolyn, was there anything else you want to share, anything? We know you'll have a lot going on, trying to reopen, and.
Just want to get to apprentice ability. I mean, I think the good news is that I was out at West Ashley today, West Ashley High, Ashley River Creative Arts, and C U Williams. And the kids are, you know, they're doing great with all the rules, wear masks, stand six feet apart, even the little ones. Teaching and learning is happening, which is exciting, after all this time planning. And today was a day when, certainly for C U Williams and Ashley River, there were more students coming back off the waitlist. But that process seemed much more smooth as compared to where we were two weeks ago for the first day of school. Saw some tech glitches around getting the right email address to communicate between Canvas and Power School and clever, but otherwise, I was impressed. I think next week is gonna be the last big hurdle as the high schools come back. And the challenge with the high school, obviously, is they're just, they're older kids and bigger bodies, and harder to keep six feet apart in our current classrooms. So we have more creative solutions coming from that. And I think parents should expect that there's still gonna be some teacherships, at least at the high school, up until that last enrollment period, and then hopefully we're gonna hold stable until the end of the first quarter for middle and elementary, and hold stable at the, at the high school through the end of the semester.
That sounds good. Is there, in D two or any of the schools, I know some of the teachers will change, but are we in any situation, excuse me, that where students, I think at one point they talked about there's extra space at Beckham, are we sending Wanda's kids to Beckham, or are any of our students possibly going to a different building, a different school, that you know of?
They're still finalizing the plans, but at this point, it does not look like that needs to happen. Less Wanda students in the end are opting to come back at this point, so Wanda's big enough to accommodate the numbers. And I think there's still, there's a couple of classes we're worried about at Academic Magnet, around getting to the right size shape, but the, the aim is to make sure that everyone's coming back in the same building.
Alright, anyone have anything else to add or any questions? Our next meeting will be October, I want to, excuse me, are there any types of discipline cases in the queue or D two? We all knew that I see a no.
No, they're having a very nice discipline couple of weeks. We're down just in general with discipline fractions across the system. Kids are doing the right thing, they're happy to be back in school. We do, and, and the, the big issue, I think, has been some very clever teenagers using Zoom and Canvas, not for good.
Yeah.
I, I think we've figured out some of the security issues that we need to have in place to minimize that.
That sounds good. Alright, so then our next meeting is, what did we say, October, October nineteenth?
And that's your last meeting, right?
Well, probably, yeah, I mean, probably so, because, yeah, that's just two weeks from Election Day.
Alright.
We'll try to wrap that letter up and.
Have we had any additional, like, I, I'm gonna call it disciplinary codes that have had to be added to the handbook because of digital classes?
Good question.
Yes, specifically around following the health and safety protocols and the, and the change to the uniform policy to require face masks, or face covering, excuse me, at this point.
Okay. Are we, could we get an update on, just, I'm out of curiosity, what those are, if there, if there's like a document that has them?
There is. I, I'll make sure you get it, yep.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Alright, well.
Awesome.
And we, we never get Marty back, is that right?
Yeah, she texted to see if we were still on. I said we were almost done, so, yeah. She was trying to get on, couldn't get on.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Bye.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Bye, baby.
Yep, he says bye.